Good evening. We'd like to welcome you all to our Student Citizen of the Month for Month of March. We're excited to have you all here today. It's a full house and a great-looking group, so we're grateful that you're all here. We have a couple of things that we like to do at the beginning of Student Citizen of the Month. The first is to highlight our pillar of the month. Like many of your schools, we as a council have adopted the pillars of character. They're listed on the wall as well, and every month we highlight a different pillar of character. This month's pillar is respect. We also want to thank our sponsors. I think they're here. Did I hear that we have a representative from Sal's tonight? Is he here? Yeah, awesome. Terrific. Stand up so we can all give you a round of applause. Sal's Gilbert Pizza is an absolute gem in our community and a huge supporter of all the programs that we have here in the town. They also support our PD in force, and I love what you guys do. You guys look a little young, but I guarantee you know how to work hard if your parents own a restaurant. So, thank you so much for being here today. Appreciate it. We also want to recognize Nitro Live. It's where science and ice cream come together. Nothing could go wrong there, right? And so, we're grateful for their sponsorship of Student Citizen of the Month. There will be coupons for your students inside their packets that they'll be receiving tonight. So, way to go, guys. We do believe in education in the town of Gilbert. Education and our quality education system is still the number-one reason that people choose Gilbert, Arizona for their home, and it's because of the incredible individuals that we have working in our schools. Everyone from staff to teachers to administrators, and our superintendencies are often here as well. If you have a hand in our schools, if you are a teacher, a staff member, or an administrator, will you please stand so that we can all recognize you? I think it's really important to note that they're here. This isn't a normal school activity, so they're here to support students, and they're here most of them the day before a half-day, which is, you know, other code for crazy, right, at school, and right before their spring break. So, thank you all for taking extra time out. We do have a little thing that we like to do, and I need a helper. You look like you'd be a good helper. Can I borrow you? Come on up. Come on over. Tell us your name.
Isabella.
Isabella, did you know that today is International Women's Day? I just felt like you should know. We're having fun with that today at Town Hall. We have one thing we want you to do. All the names of the teachers that submitted a student to our Student Citizen of the Month program, the names are in here. And will you draw one of those names? They're going to get a gift card. We wish we could give them to all of our teachers, but it's a little way for us to say thank you. Do you want to read it? You want to try?
Mrs. Nowman.
Mrs. Nowman.
From Carroll Ray Elementary.
From Carroll Ray Elementary.
Thank you. Good helper and great reading. Here, I'll take that from you. Thanks for your help. Is Mrs. Nowman here? Sometimes they're here. We'll make sure she gets it. Thank you. We've recognized our teachers. I probably moved a little bit ahead. I also want to recognize the fact that I get to work on a pretty incredible team, just like many of our teachers do, and I want to recognize our town council who worked tirelessly to promote Gilbert, Arizona, and we're really fortunate to have the team that we have. We have Vice Mayor Bridgette Peterson, council members Eddie Cook, Jared Taylor, and Victor Peterson, and Councilmember Jordan Ray. And we excuse Councilmember Scott Anderson. He actually is out of state right now attending a family funeral, so our hearts go out to him, and I know he'd rather, I'm sure, be here tonight with all of you. At this time, we will start our Student Citizen of the Month, and we do this really organized and in three groups. So, if your elementary school is either Ashland Ranch Elementary through Islands Elementary, your students can come on down, and Councilmember Ray will help. And while you're coming down, I want to point out, I want to point out Lauren Oxford. I almost called you Lauren Conrad. She's like famous, right? You kind of are famous. She did her first, yeah, she did her first Facebook Live this week for the town. But Lauren Oxford is here from our digital team, and she's going to be taking some photos. How are you, buddy? Come on down. Yes, you're going to be in a good spot. And so, those pictures will be available for you to capture online. On Facebook, they upload them the evening of, and then also lots of opportunities for you to come take pictures when your student gets called. So, who's going to be our guinea pig tonight? Vice Mayor?
Ready?
Who's going to show the rest of the kids how to do it?
Is this on? Yes, it is. We would like to have Malcolm Trivitt from Ashland Ranch Elementary. Parents, if you want to come down front, please feel free when your student gets their picture, but you can always download it from Facebook. Next up, we have Holland Bradshaw from Bridges Elementary. We have Roxton Whitmore from Carroll Ray Ranch. Yeah, there you go. Because they're neighbors. Friends of Dallin. Next, we have Cameron Rangel from Centennial Elementary. Next, we have Reyna Hartquist from Chaparral Elementary. And Peyton Kuhn from Christ Greenfield Lutheran. How about Mia Isaacson from Coronado Elementary? Did I get that right? Thank you. Thank you. Please tell me if I don't get your name right. Please. It's not easy. Laura Brimmer from Gilbert Elementary. Holden McQuillan Reifer from Higley Traditional. Is it Reifer? Was I right? Reefer. Matea Miller from Houston Elementary. That's it.
We will bring down Group Two. That's the rest of our elementary school students, and we understand, of course, that it is a school night and that people have other commitments. So, after your student gets their word if you do need to leave, we completely understand. And also, it helps make room for the other people that are standing in the doorway. So, if you're comfortable either way, we're welcome to have you as well. All those other elementary school honorees, yep, come on down.
Yep. Try. I know. Perfect. Perfect. Alicia Brown from Leading Edge Academy. No, Alicia. Joseph Jones from Mesquite Elementary. Oh, is she coming? Oh, she's on crutches. Oh.
Special treatment. Hey, you're pretty quick.
Yeah, you are. I know, that's cute. Jordan, does she want to go sit in a chair over there? Hey, Alicia. Next, we have Joseph Jones from Mesquite Elementary. Eliana Perez from Pioneer Elementary. Did I do? Yoselyn Rodriguez from Playa del Rey Elementary. Did I say it? Oh. The hard ones are still coming. Okay, this one. Taylor Ferservi from Quartz Elementary. Fair service. I tried to put a good spin on it. Yeah, I was trying to put a French on it. I was just imperious, you know? Oh, what was it? Kendall Pekacek from Riggs Elementary. I had help. I had help over here. Addison Lewick from Settlers Point Elementary. Were you a good kid? Brandon Lortique from Velvista Academy. Did I get that right, Brandon? Confirmation. Daniel Thomas Jr. from Canyon Valley High School. Vishnu Kota from Gilbert Classical Academy. Ethan Olson, Leading Edge Early College. Max Blue, Leading Edge Early College. No. Riley Johnson, Mesquite Junior High. So, I don't really just kill this last name. I'm going to say Sofia from Payne Junior High, and you can come tell me how to say your last name, please. Sofia Mick-O-Logic from Payne Junior High. Sometimes you just got to... Bethany Calsher from Perry High School. She's dressed like it. Abigail Tanner from Sausman Middle School. Two thumbs up. Abby Bertrand from South Valley Junior High. Abby Bertrand from South Valley Junior High. That does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month. Enjoy your evening and your spring break, and we will resume the business portion of our agenda in just a few minutes. Canyon Valley High School. Daniel Thomas. Now you get special treatment. How does that...
Then we want a speech next, Daniel. Mom's always most important. Back, back. Don't try to leave yet.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our March 8, 2018 Town Council meeting. We are grateful to have just celebrated our Student Citizens of the Month that were here just before this meeting. That was probably the mass exodus you saw as you came in. It was them leaving. Great group of youth, and we're proud to celebrate them. At this time, we will move to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and we have some youth here. Do you have scouts you can pull up here, Councilmember Taylor? All right, we'll invite all scouts to the front of council chambers and invite the rest of the audience to please rise.
Mayor, we have Luke from Troop 849 to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we're always glad when we have the scouts here tonight. They're working on their citizenship in the community merit badge, and it's so great that they're getting educated on the town of Gilbert and all the wonderful things that we have to offer, and we also appreciate all the service that the Boy Scouts offer in our community. We'd like to ask them to introduce themselves. If you could tell us your name and your rank, and then at the end, Councilmember Ray's joining me here. We would like to thank you with a copy of the Constitution that we hold dear in our town. Name and rank. Tell me your name.
I'm Adam Johansson. I do forget what rank I am.
But in the future, he's gonna be an Eagle Scout. Doesn't he look like an Eagle Scout? It's gonna be great. Go ahead, and let's hand this mic down.
I'm Luke Whitmer, and I am a Star.
I'm Josh Hutchinson, and I'm a First Class.
I am Nathan Barney, and I am a First Class Scout.
I'm Richard Adams, Scout Master, and I was an Eagle Scout as a youth.
Richard, thank you for leading these wonderful scouts. Mayor, any words of wisdom from our leadership here tonight?
Just, we appreciate the service you all continually provide to the town, and don't stop until you get your Eagle, okay? As a mother with kids that might be a little bit stuck, I'm just giving you some friendly advice. All right, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scout.
We're pleased to invite Dr. Tom Chamberlain of the Greenfield Ward from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to offer our invocation this evening. Is Dr. Chamberlain here? I didn't get a chance to see him ahead of time. Councilmember Ray, would you be so kind as to offer our invocation? Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for our many blessings. We're grateful for this community that we live in. We are grateful for this country that we live in. We're grateful for those who help protect this country, both here locally and those serving in the military. We ask for thy blessings of protection be upon each one of them. We ask for thy guidance tonight as we make decisions that will impact the residents of the town. Be with us always, we ask, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jim Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook. Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray. Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Forum is present.
Thank you very much, and thank you to Councilmember Anderson for joining us on the phone this evening. He is out of town for personal reasons. We also have three proclamations this evening, and Councilmember Cook will assist us in the first item.
Thank you, Mayor. I would love to invite one of my most favorite teams in the town, our DV team, and some special guests. Come down here to the front, please. So if Jessica, I don't know if Lisa's here or not.
We don't really have favorite town teams, but I do love these people as well, so...
I'm gonna have Jessica to my right, and if I have the town to my left. So if you come over here. Oh, Lisa, come here. Yeah, you come over here as well. I have the privilege and honor to understand and journey with this team as relates to making domestic violence here in Gilbert zero, and it's been a journey that hasn't been pleasant. It's kind of the dark side of Gilbert, but this team here has been extremely, extremely committed to making DV here in Gilbert zero. So with that, let's start, have a round of applause to this team in doing that. These fine individuals to my right have inspired me to share with you what this team is actually implementing and executing. So this is a proclamation which is called Endeavor. So up here on the screen, you'll see the acronym EN-DVR, which stands for Ending Domestic Violence Responsibly. With that, I'm gonna pass the microphone to my left and have each of the individuals of the team introduce themselves and their role, and then if you want, some of the team members can talk a little bit about their part in our new program or process called Endeavor. Judge?
Thank you, Councilman Cook. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. John Hudson, the Presiding Judge of the Court. In regards to this program, I have to give at least the name, the brandy of it, credit to Mr. Walterson, who's two down from me, who came up with the name. I just want to say, I've sat through many council meetings. I've been here for about 16 years, and Gilbert families have always been the most important thing from the DS that we've always talked about, and it's the filter which we bring most of our policies through. And so when we look at this program, it's a way to put families back together. It's not only about the victims, it's also about putting the families back together and giving them an opportunity to. So this program came forth via Councilman Cook. It just made sense in helping everybody who's involved in the process, because in the end, as we always say here, Gilbert families are the backbone of this community. So this program, thanks to Councilman Cook's direction, is helping us in that direction.
My name is Terry Good. I'm the court enforcement supervisor. My role in the program is to actually be the probation officer for everyone that's placed on probation through the program.
Good evening. Adam Walterson, Court Administrator. Just briefly, this is my 20th year here in Gilbert, serving as your Court Administrator since 2010, and I was proud of this program as I have of any other program we've done, and we do a lot of good things. But domestic violence and addressing it isn't new to us. This is just a new spin, an integration that's gonna be more powerful, and hopefully we can keep families together and move forward in ending domestic violence in Gilbert, and hopefully it'll spread to the state.
Good evening. My name is Jim Nugavire. I'm the town prosecutor, and to my left is Zach. He actually is my DV prosecutor in this. He'll speak here in a moment. The concept, at least from the prosecutor's standpoint, is to focus on DV cases by providing uniformity, providing a consistent voice so that the police officers, which you'll hear from here in a few minutes, and the detectives, have someone to contact. At point of contact, basically, in a reference point within the prosecution unit, so we get consistent results and we hold at least the actors accountable, and also provide services so that we can rectify any issues that are there. But I would like to call out also Councilmember Cook for his insight in this and his innovation in kind of leading the charge. So thank you, sir, for what you've done as well.
Yes, I'm Zach Albin. I'm one of the Assistant Town Prosecutors here. So I think, literally and figuratively, I normally stand between the Police Department and the Court. I represent the state in bringing these criminal actions, and I'm just part of, as you see, a pretty big team. It's a holistic approach, which is something that's obviously new in this sort of implementation, to protect victims and make sure that there's just results in the prosecution side of it.
I'm Deana Aguilera, and I'm one of the victim advocates in the prosecutor's office. We have two advocates. One of the most important responsibilities we have is to notify victims of their rights as victims of crime, and while notifying them of their rights, we help guide them through, guide, well, guide their case through the criminal justice process. We will help them identify needs and connect them to the right services.
Thank you. Sergeant Jeff Soderman. I supervise the Family Violence Unit with the two detectives to my left, Brandon Wilson and Vic Perez. I facilitate whatever they need. I'm here to serve these guys, make sure they're doing the best that they can for the cases. Any resources they need, I get to them. And for us, it's just the collaboration, have a streamlined holistic approach, really gives us an avenue where we have a prosecutor to go to, to staff cases and just ensure justice is done and victims provide the service they need, and also the offenders are held accountable.
I am Brandon Wilson. I'm one of the detectives in the Family Violence Unit there at the Police Department. Our role in the Family Violence Unit is just to be the boots on the ground and conduct these investigations and provide the in-home services to victims of these crimes, and the offenders for that matter, too. We're kind of a team of guys that doesn't necessarily focus just on the victim side of things, but we recognize that families can benefit from the services that we provide. We try and make sure that both sides of the equation are getting the services that we can bring the families back together. So that's kind of our goal from our standpoint.
Yep, and we get the privilege of, sorry, I'm Vic Perez. I'm one of the other detectives. We get the privilege of being on the streets with the guys. We act as a liaison between the patrol guys, victims, suspects, the prosecutor's office, and whatnot. Wanna also give kudos to Councilmember Cook. He won't tell you this, but his passion for DV has led him to a couple ride-alongs. I think you've sat through some court cases on your own time, so he brings a lot of passion to DV, and we're all very thankful for what you've done for us to bring Endeavor to light. So from the team, I thank you.
And to my good friend to my right, you've been an inspiration to me, but maybe you could share a little bit on how this might be something that's nice here in Gilbert.
Hi, my name is Jessica Nicely. I'm the CEO and founder of Wing Tope Family Advocacy Foundation. I have the good fortune of getting to work with the town of Gilbert and this team regularly as we serve victims of violence here in our community. I'm also a survivor of witnessing domestic violence and experiencing child abuse. Every 44 minutes in the state of Arizona, a child witnesses an act of domestic violence. They call us the invisible victims, and I have tried for my entire adult life to make sure that those victims are not invisible, and it's been a great privilege and joy to know that this team right here makes sure that those victims are not invisible. It's been an honor to get to work with so many victims that are now working their way to becoming survivors, powerful, strong survivors, and using their voice and using their experiences for good, and that wouldn't be possible if we didn't have this team right here, and I'm thankful that one of them is standing right to my right. So it's just such a gift. Wouldn't ever have imagined, when I was a little girl, hearing it, seeing it, standing in between it, feeling the violence, that someday I would be here. We had police officers come to our house all the time. It was not this experience, and it would have been life-changing if it had been. So I'm so grateful and blessed to be able to be part of this team. Thank you, Eddie.
My name is Lisa. I'm a Gilbert resident, and didn't know I was gonna talk, so yeah, but it's okay. I'm just really proud of Councilmember Cook for bringing something like this forward. I'm proud to live in a town like this that will embrace this issue and try to make strides in the right direction, and like eternally grateful for the end. And like, eternally grateful for the advocates and everyone in the domestic violence unit, and Jessica, just everyone for their, really, holistic was a word that was used, but support throughout the whole process. We should be very proud that they're all working for us in Gilbert.
Well, you both should get a round of applause as well, thank you. When we look at Team Gilbert and we talk about families, this particular program is to make the families whole and to heal families. That's really what Endeavor is about, and that we hope that as this program gets notoriety and the other communities may adopt a similar program, again, it's about healing our families. And again, I cannot thank the team enough for embracing that, and it's always been that way. We've just now, you know, we're gonna brand it in a way that's very positive. Anyways, I have a proclamation on behalf of our Team Gilbert that I'd like to read about Endeavor. Whereas the town of Gilbert recognizes domestic violence is the most significant families-in-crisis issue to address. And whereas the town of Gilbert has implemented a program called Endeavor, an integrated criminal justice endeavor to ending domestic violence in Gilbert. Whereas, community advocacy and investigations into domestic violence cases by specially-trained and mission-dedicated police officers committed to ending domestic violence in our community. And whereas, domestic violence cases prosecuted and managed by a specially-trained and mission-dedicated prosecutor from filing to completion of sentencing in concert with victim advocacy services and treatment providers. And whereas, judicial specialization, treatment, and compliance focused on protecting victims, habitating people, using an integrated case management approach encompassing stakeholders from court enforcement, Gilbert Youth and Adult Resources counselors, and the prosecuting attorney responding to defendants' progress or regress, and victim advocates representing the interest of victims. And whereas Gilbert has a dedicated family crimes officers, police counselors, and victim advocates saving lives every day. And whereas Endeavor's goal is to help heal and make the family whole again. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Jen Daniels of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Endeavor Month. And thank you. And to my colleagues behind me, you've been a real champion for allowing us to do this in Gilbert, and thank you for allowing me to journey down this road. Without your support and Patrick's team, this would not happen. So again, thank you. Let's get some pictures here. Judge, I'm gonna have you hold this.
While you guys are taking a picture, don't stop, but I did want to point out that Vic over there, wave your hand, Vic. Vic was one of our MVPs today from our Gilbert town team. There were six identified in the town and received an award, we met his great family today, too, so congratulations. We'll turn it now to Councilmember Victor Peterson to help us with the recognizing Waterwise Gilbert. And Haley, Haley, I'm surprised you're still standing. She's had two incredible days with, how many fourth graders?
About 1,800 fourth graders.
1,800 fourth graders for the last two days, she should get an award and a vacation.
So Mayor, that is a tough act to follow, I just want to compliment our DV team. I'm so proud of the work they do and so grateful for what they do. Also, it is, it's a great passion, I think, for all of us, we care so much about our families in Gilbert. That's really the building block of our community. So, we are shifting gears, though, a little bit here, and I want to talk to you a little bit about the Waterwise Gilbert program. With this program, Gilbert Water Conservation works with a lot of different entities, homeowners associations, churches, schools, businesses, and other commercial water customers, to help them use water wisely while still maintaining a beautiful and vibrant landscape. So the way the program works is, based on the landscaping of these entities, they're given an annual budget, that their water budget, that they're supposed to try and meet. It's customized, and they have access to their progress through a web portal so that they can stay on track. So, so let's see how this works. In 2017, we had 120 participants with this program, and we saved over 200 million gallons of water, which equates to $370,000 in avoided water costs for these sites. That's pretty amazing. You know, this is a great program because it also helps Gilbert, the town of Gilbert, and our water needs as well. And it certainly is a scarce resource here in the desert, something we're very conscious of. So it's really a win-win, it's a beautiful thing. So now, not all the program participants receive the Waterwise Gilbert distinction. It takes work to get it, they must be within 20% of their annual landscape water budget. And so again, it's not, it's not easy. So we're proud to announce that there are 62 Waterwise Gilbert sites for 2017. So we've got them up here. And so what we want to do is recognize them, are there, any representatives from any of these organizations, please come on up right now. We would love to recognize you and have a photo together here. Like I said, we're very proud of all of our partners, and we know that this takes effort. It is a sustained commitment to water conservation, and we're very proud of the work that you've done and grateful for you. So with that, let's give them a big hand. We'll take a picture here together.
I'm almost done with my slide deck. We're almost there. No, it's all good, I just want to get through them.
Sorry, failed to mention that. Beautiful, so you can see, these, they're not suffering for aesthetics, they're beautiful. So thank you so much for the work you've done.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Ray to assist us with Blue Line of Toy Drive, Blue Line Toy Drive.
Mayor, I will turn the microphone over to Chief Sobor, Chief of Police, to talk about this one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We want to recognize our high donors of our Blue Line of Love Toy Drive. In the month of December, we sought donations from the community, churches, businesses, anyone that was willing and able to give us some donations that we could in turn take those gifts and give them to the families in need throughout the town of Gilbert. We had tons of donations, hundreds of toys, we had bikes, stuffed animals, games throughout our entire police department. And then, right before Christmas, we were able to get all together and deliver those to the families. And so tonight, we wanted to recognize some of those companies that helped us. I'm gonna turn it over to Claire Wieland, one of our crime prevention technicians, to read the names. If you are here, if you could start working your way down here, and we'll do an individual photo, and then we'll do a group photo at the end.
All right, we are going to start with the event team. Hello, Rowan. Okay, our next business is DC Restoration. Okay, we have Starbucks Coffee Company at Power and Ray, are they here today? They might have not made it. Okay, Sal's Gilbert Pizza. Okay, IHOP from Gilbert and Warner. Okay, do we have anybody here from the Bolero or from Trilogy? I think that might be all of them. That's gonna be all of them that are here tonight. Is there anybody else that we missed?
All right, at this time, that does complete our presentations and proclamations, and we'll move now to communications from citizens. Are there any slips in the back, Commander Bryce? Okay, thank you. So there are none?
No, ma'am, I have nothing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That moves us to the consent calendar, and I look to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Thank you, Mayor. I have only been asked by most of the council to pull item number seven, so I think I can move ahead with the rest of the consent agenda. I would be happy to do that. So we have items four, A, B, C, and D, item five, item six, item eight, item nine, item 10, item 11, A and B, item 12, A, B, and C, item 13, item 14, A and B, item 15, item 16, item 17, item 18, A and B, item 19, item 20, item 21, item 22, 23, A and B, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, please vote. That motion carries with us. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Anderson, would you like to vote by acclamation? That was a 7-0 vote, thank you very much. That moves us to agenda item seven.
Mayor?
Would you like a presentation, or do you want to just have to?
That's, you know, that's up to the council, I don't need one. I have a slide, though, for the projector, I'd like to give to staff if they'll put up for me, that'd be great. I don't know, anyone? Oh, awesome. Thank you, Amy, appreciate your help on that. Oh. No projector? Well then. That will be interesting. Okay, well, I have a handout myself, so I don't, you can give one to staff and they like one, it's fine. All right, so I pulled this item because, as everyone knows, I've mentioned this before, I'll make this as brief as I can, but I'm really concerned about the cost of this. It's almost $800,000 to renovate this water feature. And furthermore, you know, water features have pumps, and they're expensive to maintain. Again, I want to say how much I respect and appreciate the partnership we've had with SRP, and understand that this was built in commemoration of that partnership. I simply think there are more taxpayer-effective ways to commemorate that partnership, and certainly support other ways that we might do that. But as I've handed out, I've asked David Fabiano to give me an estimate, I know it's not perfect, it's kind of rough at this point, but it's about $200,000 to remove and replace with turf, just kind of like the landscaping that's nearby. And so that's a $589,000 savings in the general fund this year, if the project wasn't to spill over next, but in the immediate future. I also show, we learned this from our recent retreat, the debt service we are owed every year, right now at least, until some of the debt falls off, is 22.3 million. And last year's levy was 21.65, and so the difference there, the shortfall, if you will, is 650,000. The point is, if we were to save the money, go ahead and, let's make it look nice, I don't want a non-functioning feature, I think that that's a disservice, we want it to look nice. Let's remove it, let's make it look like landscaping, make it look nice. We'd only need 61,000 to meet the shortfall, and still, we could avoid noticing a tax increase. By any measure, by any standard, certainly would not be a tax increase. So that's my proposal, I think in the long run, we'll be happy anyway, because for movement of people through the area, possibly traffic in the future if we connect parking lots, having that feature out of the way is gonna be a really nice thing as we grow. So that's my proposal, I certainly, I'm not, I won't support it as it is. So what I'm gonna do, unless there's a majority vote to approve it, I'm gonna direct staff to come back with a budget for the, an exact budget, and work on contracts for the replacement with turf, and then also to put that money aside for use. Well, hopefully, and we can't bind it now, but hopefully for the tax levy, so.
So in order to have some simplicity in what we're actually trying to accomplish this evening, it's specific to this particular agenda item seven, which is the approval of an engineering contract. And I'm not opposed to exploring ways that we either don't do it or find a better use, but I do think that for tonight's purpose, I don't want to mix two conversations in a way that may be confusing. We are solely, our responsibility tonight and how the agenda has been noted, we are solely responsible for an engineering contract, one way or the other. And I'm, again, happy to explore options, but I don't want to mix a secondary property tax levy conversation with this.
Well, Mayor, just to note, this engineering contract is specific to do it as a renovation, so we would be committing to that direction. And so what we, I think it's only responsible, look at the total cost as we commit, and then what other uses we might put the money to. So that's why I bring that up, but you're right, it's, we can't specifically do anything with a levy yet, I'm not suggesting that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ray.
So I think that Councilmember Peterson makes lots of great points, and I agree with you, I think that for tonight, I'm in favor of not approving this contract, and that we can direct staff to go back and come forward with what the exact cost would be to replace it with grass or rocks to be more water-wise or whatever they deem appropriate. But I do think that, I'm not in favor of this contract.
Can you do so in a motion? Yes, Councilmember Anderson. I didn't see your flag.
One of the reasons that I was interested in this item is, we had pulled up previously to have some more continuing discussions about what we were going to do at that corner, and that really hasn't happened yet. And I'm just concerned that by just renovating what's already there, I watched that fountain for a whole two weeks and then quit, and then worked for another two weeks and quit over time, and I'm afraid we'd just be doing the same thing again. So I, I agree, we should look at some other concepts, and I'd be happy to work with David Fabiano, to bring together a group to talk about what's best for that corner, and what makes sense for, you know, cost-wise.
I think we have a volunteer. I love volunteers, thank you, Councilmember Anderson.
So Mayor, I move that we do not approve the contract, and that we direct staff to look at some other options.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Taylor, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, Mayor, I certainly support the motion. Just as we go through the discussion, I'm wondering, Patrick, if there's a way that we can dig up the ASU students' research from a few years back, and maybe just send it to council as we're thinking about what our options are. There was some pretty good research that was done on that corner, and maybe that would just help us prepare for the discussion. That be okay? Thank you.
Please vote, and Councilmember Anderson, if you could vote by acclamation. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That does move us to the public hearing items on our agenda this evening. We have four items on our public hearing today. Are there any wishes by the council member to speak on any of the items?
31, please.
31. Any others?
34, Mayor.
All right, what I'll do then is open the public hearing on Agenda Items 32 and 33, and close the public hearing on those Agenda Items, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve 32 and 33.
Second.
Thank you, please vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 31, and look to Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. You probably remember our discussion on the entertainment district, and my commitment was when we had something within the 300-foot, that I would bring that to our attention, because I know we wanted to use this time as a gate. This is a church that I have specifically heard from. I know it doesn't seem like they operate that much, but I do travel this road regularly, and they do have some minimal meetings and things like that. And I have heard multiple concerns from the neighborhoods in this area, so I, you know, again, think we really need to keep those, love to revisit the entertainment district, but for this one, I, it's just too close to an existing church, and I think that's an important buffer that we need to have around our schools and churches, so I'm not in favor of this tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? I mean, Councilmember?
Yeah, I know, right?
Got confused. Look to my right, look to my left.
That's hard. So the packet seemed to indicate that there was no church operating here. Have we reached out to make sure and get their feedback?
I have reached out to them personally on multiple occasions and been unable to contact or even drop by and meet anyone in that facility, so I'm, if you have a contact, I would love, I'd love their contact information.
It is hard to get a hold of them, but we do see some meetings there, and you have to, I had to physically get out and walk over there and knock, even when I see cars there, sometimes they're not answering, but I did hear, and I asked them specifically, hey, how's it going? And they did call this one out specifically about the amount of liquor licenses in the downtown, as something that their congregation had expressed to their pastor as a concern.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? I will close the public hearing on this Agenda Item 31, and entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve item 31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. Councilmember Anderson? Sit down. Oh, thank you, that's a 5-2, thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 34. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 34.
Mayor, we have one person that would like to speak. Are we going to do a presentation or just discussion?
I believe we had a council member that wished to speak on this item as well.
Should we have the public first?
Absolutely, I just wanted to confirm that that was correct, is that okay? Linda, would a member of your team come up and please, Linda, will you please come up and give us a brief presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Linda Edwards, Planning Manager for our lovely town. I'll go ahead and, if you, if you would like, council members, a very brief presentation. This is a zoning text amendment for the land development code. In this town, we do adopt our design guidelines, or a range of guidelines, in our land development code, so that's why you see it as a zoning case. In Gilbert, we wrap our arms around mixed use. Our general plan has many chapters that talk about goals and policies for mixed use in Gilbert, and we also permit multifamily within the regional commercial zoning district with a conditional use permit. With that conditional use permit, like up for other uses throughout the town and other zoning districts, this one specifically requires that the commission find four additional findings so that the project or apartments within regional commercial is truly mixed and integrated. Today, our land development code says that these methods to achieve integration are located in our land development code. That is not true. They were not adopted. In 2014, there was stakeholder meetings, and they actually developed the criteria for the guidelines that you see before you today. However, we were not able to adopt them at that time. So we brought back a team of stakeholders, went through them, and we brought forward to the planning commission the same set of criteria in the design guidelines, and a few things were modified, and the purpose statements and how we go about implementing those design guidelines, there were some changes to those and brought forward. This is just a little clip of what that looks like, where there's an introduction of the type of finding to be made, and some ideas to assess the project. So tonight, what we have before you are the set of guidelines in your packet that are redlined. What the motions are, you have an option here, and that is to adopt the guidelines as recommended by the planning commission. When the planning commission reviewed these design guidelines at their public hearing, they chose to delete the redlines that were provided by the second stakeholder meeting, and add language to quantify meeting the findings by striving to meet five of the methods that were listed for each finding. The second motion for your consideration is to adopt the guidelines with the redlines that were submitted by the second stakeholder meeting, and strike the criteria that you must meet five or more of the list. So those are your two options that we have before you, and I'm happy to embellish any other information you might need, thank you.
Thank you, Linda, we appreciate it. Our public comment, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thank you very much. I'd like to invite David Caveney to the podium, and David, if you could just give us your name and city of residence, please.
Thank you. So Dave Caveney, live in Gilbert. As some of you may know, I sit on your planning commission, and in the five years I've sat on the planning commission, I have never felt the need to come to a meeting and explain anything we've done until tonight. But I think this is a very important issue, because there is an effort underneath this. In fact, there was no second stakeholder group, there were a few additional voices that wanted to be heard in the main stakeholder group, and they had an agenda. And so let me just briefly explain, if I may, where this has been and why it is so important, because our zoning of regional commercial property is at severe risk, and I think that's why I'm here. I didn't get this at first, and that's why I felt the need to come and share with you what is at risk in this vote tonight. So right now, in the town of Gilbert, we have had two projects that have come through planning commission and a town council as mixed-use projects. One is the project just outside our doors here, I believe it's called Broadstone, and then the Santan Flats. Both of those came through claiming to be mixed-use, but had almost no mixed-use elements as part of them. We reviewed that with them, but with the four findings that Linda just explained, there wasn't enough criteria or ability to adjudicate those cases in any clear way. The planning commission denied them, or actually recommended that they be denied by the town council. Unfortunately, both went through with 7-0 votes in town council. So now we have two projects in the town that are labeled as mixed-use, but are nothing more than apartment complexes next to a commercial center. Well, we have more in the queue, and here's why. Right now, with the way that our, that our code is written, it is more lucrative for a multifamily or MF developer to come in and seek out RC property, regional commercial property, claim they're doing mixed-use with very little scrutiny to their, their project elements, and get it approved. They get higher densities that way, which means higher yield and higher profits. So we are at risk of losing much of, if not most of, our RC property to MF development. We'll become the apartment capital of the nation if we are not careful here. What the working session did, that the working group did, that Linda mentioned, they got together, and I have to tell you, it was a diverse group with different opinions but no agendas. The group went in there with just an interest in helping out the town. What we came out with was what Linda described as motion one, which frankly is the motion that the planning commission approved unanimously. Motion two was not approved, in fact, it was vehemently denied, and here's why. After we had the working group go through, and we voted to do the additional criteria in each of the findings, and to set some measure of accountability for medium mixed use, the five of eight requirements, when we did that, that, that established some ability for us at planning commission and for you at town council to adjudicate the cases. You can truly look at it and see what effort has been made. Now, we, we met the requirement to be a little less than, than dictative, in that we said they shall strive to achieve five of eight. It's not a mandate, but it will show effort, it will show that somebody has tried to achieve these elements that truly make mixed use. They can't just say they do. For example, the property out here just outside our doors, their only mixed-use element was a gravel path between the two properties, which frankly is, is not acceptable. In any event, what happened is after our working session, and we approved all those things, we came to commission meeting, prepared to vote on it, but there was a group of developers, well, there were two developers and one land attorney, that expressed frustration that they had not been included in the, in the group. But keep in mind, they have an interest in their properties and the developments they're doing. We let them come, we continued the motion, and we continued the case, and let them come in and speak on the matter. When they left, we agreed to let them look at a couple points and decide if there wasn't some better language that would help them feel better about the language in the, in the revision than what we'd come up with. What they did is completely gut the document, and that's what these redlines that Linda mentioned do, they gut the document. In fact, the document is worse with the redlines than it is without any, than the regular four findings that we had before. It's absolutely worse. So I just want to emphasize to you that right now, we're at risk of losing all of our RC property, if we're not careful, to MF developers, but if you approve these additional criteria, it gives us all the opportunity to better assess and value, evaluate whether or not we're getting mixed use. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, David, we appreciate you coming here. I just want to make one quick correction, and that is on the multifamily project, Broadstone, and the other one, there was, were not unanimous votes on our council, and I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Thank you.
That we do look at those on an individual basis, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you for saying that, because I was a no vote on that project.
As was I. I will never forget it.
We wanted to, we wanted to make sure, some of us wanted to make sure that we're being commercial with that, but again, thank you.
Correct, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I studied the, this issue quite a bit, I've spent a lot of time reading the minutes and speaking also with stakeholders, and, you know, there's different perspectives. There's just two different perspect, well, there's more than two, but there's two main perspectives here. But one of the common themes I saw, and maybe Mr. Caveney will disagree with this, but one of the main themes I saw, though, even with the planning commission, was the intent to make the document guidelines rather than regulations. Now, maybe some don't, but that's what I, I saw that over and over, and I guess what I, you know, my feeling about it is, and that is my desire, to have guidelines that are helpful as tools, you know, it's been mentioned that we need a way to determine if it's mixed-use. I think the tool is still there, we still have all these different methods. It's useful for the planning commission and for the council to use, you know, the exact number that each of us determine, or, you know, maybe they do really well on one, so weigh it more heavily than some others that maybe they don't do as well. I think it's better to keep it broad, and it's still a very useful tool, and furthermore, from my perspective, I don't want to create some strict regulations, I want to keep it as, as guidelines. I think motion two gives us a clear tool that is not regulation, that is a guideline, and is still very useful as policymakers to determine whether or not a development is mixed-use. We have every bit of authority, you know, with that motion as with the other. And so that's what I'm going to be pushing for tonight, Mayor.
Any other additional comment? Councilmember Taylor?
Sure, thank you, a couple of comments. You know, did we get mixed-use on that property, that parcel? No. Are we getting mixed-use on the whole package? Yes. So, you know, important context needs to, you know, be, be stated on, on what actually happened on that particular vote, and, and there is some good commercial that, that is in the works, so you see, see the signs coming up. You know, the, the language, all we're going to do is start arguing over the word strive, you know, that, who's, who's going to be interpreting the word strive now, is pretty much what that new language is going to be. So I, I agree with Councilmember Peterson that when we adopt language, it needs to be clear, it needs to be understandable, and someone's going to start setting some precedent on what strive needs to be, because strive might become must, or, and then that's what we've always done, when strive isn't really strive. So if we're going to put language in, regardless of what it is, it needs to be clear for it to be effective, otherwise, it's going to be all over, and I think we'll be worse off with vague language. You know, I've stated all along that I am certainly in favor of nice, clear language. I do support zoning, but not a lot of restrictive zoning, and to disparage investors and property owners to do things with their property, I don't think is very fair. We have a housing shortage in our country, we have a housing shortage in Gilbert, and this does serve some people that would like to live in our, our, our community but are priced out, because some of the other homes are just unaffordable. So I, I think some balance is appropriate here, and, and we've said over, over and over, other, other people have said, we have far fewer apartments in our community than we, than our neighboring communities or in the valley, so that, that's also important context to have. And I don't think our planning commission and our planning department and all of us want to put junky projects in, I don't think any of us do that, but at the same time, we have to respect the needs in our community in terms of affordable housing. We also need to respect property rights, you know, that's just fundamental, and I think the second motion is going to give us clear, a more clear approach to that. If there's ways to clean up that language, I'm certainly open to that, Mayor. I think motion one is not clear language, and if we need more time on that, that's fine, I don't know if there's any burning deadline, but thank you for the time, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor Peterson?
Mayor, thank you. I attended a couple of the stakeholder meetings, and I listened to both sides. I, I tried not to interject because I wanted to hear both sides of the argument and the discussion, and then, of course, I sit as liaison to the planning commission, and I've had a lot of practice with the planning commission over the last 14 years, and I struggle, I struggled with the way that this should go. So I wanted to wait until today, till I actually made up my mind completely. I've read everything over and over again, and last week, when we attended the mayor's economic forecast, and you talked about the percentage of apartments, so I just leaned over to confirm that number with you, Mayor, and we have 87,000 residential units in the town of Gilbert, and 2.8% are multifamily. 87,000 units and 2.8% are multifamily. So we don't have a huge amount of multifamily in the town, and I know that the perception is that there's a lot, because I think that we all see it going up because it's in very visible locations, and so that's the perception, is that you're seeing a lot of it. A lot of it's been approved for many, many, many years, and it's just developing now also, so that's another perception. I agree with councilmembers Peterson and Taylor. I agree with Councilmembers Peterson and Taylor. Did you hear that? They're going to relish in that for a minute.
And you should more often.
I don't believe that developers come to the town of Gilbert looking to build a dissatisfactory product. I think that they know when they deal with the Planning Commission, the planning department, and the town council, that they know they better come to us with a really good product. And for that reason, I would support the second motion this evening. Lynda, I have one question about, and it's really one word, and I hate to wordsmith from the dais, but this word has been bugging me all day today. It's on slide three of the actual guidelines. I don't know if you have that available.
Not to put on the overhead.
Slide three of the actual design guidelines read, "The design guidelines contain a non-exhaustive list of design considerations." I hate "non-exhaustive." Can we put comprehensive list or?
Mayor.
Non-comprehensive list. So I hate the "non-exhaustive," but "non-comprehensive" suits me better. Is "non-exhaustive" a legal term?
It is. Some attorneys wrote that.
Some attorneys wrote that? So it's your fault?
I was going to say, that is a law school education right there. Tell us what it actually means.
Tell us what it means.
It means that it's, this is a list, but it can include other things as well. So it's "non-exhaustive." There's other things that can be added and considered.
I even looked it up today and had trouble finding a true definition of "non-exhaustive." You need a legal dictionary.
I need your Black Law Dictionary and then.
I guess I need a law dictionary to look at. Okay. So then if legal's fine with it, I will be fine with it. But I'm glad that I asked because now I learned something new. Thank you. So Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cook.
Mayor and council, thank you. I think the original discussion, if I remember, was how do you actually, you know, truly set the metrics as to what is and what's not? And from different councils and different planning and zoning commissioners from year to year, we're looking at how can you have it consistent from time to time to time as, you know, the years go on? And I think the "strive" really provides a lot more flexibility in this. And I like the language because, again, it provides, I think, opportunities for, you know, future leaders in our community to review. And again, I think it just provides more flexibility. I think that was really the issue. If you do set it up where it's, you know, you have to pick, you know, five of the eight, and again, how do you measure it from, you know, agenda item or different projects from project to project? And I think that was really the concern for me. So again, I like motion two, and I'm in favor of that.
Councilmember Anderson.
Just very quickly, you know, my experience in the past has been that the best projects that we have in town are the ones where we've encouraged maximum design flexibility. And I think addressing specific criteria does not encourage. I really feel strongly, let the professional planners do their job, what they're trained to do. Don't restrict them. Don't tie their hands to certain criteria, but let that be a little bit more flexible so that we get the best design. And that's always been my experience in the past.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. If no other council member was to speak, I'll just add a little bit different perspective on this and throw my two cents in here. I have been very vocal and open with the fact that I actually do want to make it harder for apartment homes to be built and condo units to be built within the town of Gilbert, especially in our regional commercial zoning districts. I see value in a higher standard, if you will, as it relates to putting multifamily in our regional commercial districts because those are also opportunities for jobs. And Gilbert is still growing. We're still growing up in many ways. Despite the fact that we're now the fourth largest community now in the state of Arizona, we're still just getting our feet under us and, you know, finding the ways to take those larger strides. So there's a ton of opportunity as it relates to commercial space. And now here is where I'll sort of twist back, if you will. And that is to say that anything that we do must be enforceable. And that, I think, is where I have hesitation with the Planning Commission's recommendation. And let me explain a little bit why, and that is that the retail model, the mixed-use type model, has changed quite a bit from when we first implemented these standards. And sometimes and on occasion, you have the multifamily piece of an overall regional commercial site come before the retail or come before the office. And when that's the case, we end up in a little bit of a conundrum with our developers in that we're telling them they have to integrate a site that has not yet been fully planned. And I think that's an unenforceable and frankly, a stifling requirement on our, some of our development community. If I had a magic wand and if I felt like I had all the votes from council, I would probably advocate to remove multifamily in commercial zoning districts, regional commercial zoning districts altogether. I would actually prefer to go that route because there's total and complete clarity. I also realize that there are property owners who purchased property, zoned it regional commercial with anticipation that at some point down the line, they would develop that and perhaps have a multifamily component within that zoning category. And so I am also sensitive to the fact that there are property rights that are associated with zoning. And so I get into this little, the development community knows that I want it to be harder for them, but I also feel very strongly that whatever we do does have to be enforceable. So I'm sorry, that was a little bit longer than I intended, but at this point, we will entertain, oh, I will close the public hearing on agenda item 34, and we will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 34, option two.
Second.
Please vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. That moves us to administrative items, and we look at agenda item 35, our board's commissions and committee reports from council. Are there any contributions today? I'm seeing, oh, yep. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I don't know if I mentioned this, so I want to make sure that I do. For our city, Gilbert is working very hard on our third annual I Run for Good race, and we've partnered directly with Ascend, which is one of our great community partners that Gilbert's worked with a lot over the years. They provide great value to those that they serve and to the community. And so we're going to work directly with them, and the proceeds will go directly to them. And so they're going to help us a little bit with getting the race going, and then we'll have those benefit them. And they do such great work, helping families in crisis, stabilizing families and homes, and also assisting seniors in need. So we're very excited about our partnership and moving forward with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, if I may, just as you know, one of the goals of the most recent human relations meetings, it's been a few months, was to increase the, or strengthen the relationship between the community and our first responders. And one of the things that we talked about, it's fun to see it come to pass, is, and you'll start to see this over more and more, is there's a, they're calling it chilling with the cop. Fun event coming up. And very grateful for the business, the Nitro Live Ice Creamery who's hosting this, and want to recognize them and thank them for hosting this. This is a great event. Those that are following council meeting tonight, if you have a group of Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or another group that you think would benefit from getting to know our police officers, law enforcement, asking questions, finding opportunities to serve, this is a great event. And they're going to have these on a regular basis. I'd encourage you to follow us on social media where these are posted and come with questions. And, you know, the overall goal is let's continue to strengthen our relationship and show appreciation to our first responders. So calling out this event, but just identifying the larger goal that we have in mind, and then issuing that challenge for those community leaders out there that can help teach our youth or strengthen our community in this way. And thanks for the town to help coordinating this. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any additional from council? That moves us to future meetings. There is one item that I believe will be calendared very shortly, and then our report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A couple items of recognition tonight. I want to first recognize our budget director, Kelly Fost. She recently, last week, pulled off a very successful financial retreat with a lot of help, but Kelly's the quarterback for that effort, and it also falls right in the middle of the budget process, which is a heavy lift in itself. And we covered a lot of information last Friday. And Kelly spent a lot of time working on that, preparing that, working with staff to make sure everything was ready to go. So we certainly appreciate her efforts, and she did an exceptional job with it. Next, we recognize six employees of our organization today for embodying the values that we hold dear in our organization. We're very grateful to them and appreciate the manner in which they go about their jobs, which reflects well on this organization and its service to its citizens. And then finally, wish all of our professional leaders and female professionals on International Women's Day. We greatly appreciate the contributions they make to our community and our organization, and we couldn't do it without them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I just want to make the note that as fun as it is to celebrate International Women's Day, as a wife and also as a mother of boys, I would happily also celebrate International Men's Day at any time. So I just want to make sure that's clear to our, to our council members that are here.
I've never heard of them.
I think we're going to, we might have to make one up. Where's the Gilbert Digital when we need them? Thank you. Any report from council on current events? And I just have a couple. Patrick, you stole my thunder today as you sang Kelly's praises. Kelly, really tremendous job. I actually said to Patrick, I think I'd like to send her flowers. He told me you don't like flowers. And so I'm still working on finding just the right gift to thank you, really for tremendous work. And the position that this community is in, we all benefit from, both as citizens and then as leadership. And it takes an entire team to make that happen. And again, Kelly, thank you for presenting us with such really precise and thorough information and helping us really take the community to the next level. So we appreciate that. I also want to.
Mayor, that gift, I found out what it is.
You have an idea?
I know what it is. I use it. It's Dutch Bros Coffee.
Oh, okay.
I'm telling you.
I thought you were going to say a hoverboard or a cowboy hat. I wasn't sure.
I have thanked them on behalf of the council by bringing them that. So that is the, that is the secret for her group, is Dutch Bros.
Kelly, we're taking requests. All right. Oh, yes, please.
Just on that same note, I just want to say how awesome it was to see all the data that came out, and in particular, the plan to actually do all the repair and replacement for all our streets within existing funding sources. Well, you didn't see me do it, but I wanted to do a backflip. I can only do cartwheels, so still working on my backflip, but thank you. That is awesome, something that's been heavy on my heart and on my mind. And on my last year in council, it's really neat to see that plan go forward. So thank you and the rest of the team for putting that together.
Mayor, on your last night, do you think you could do a backflip on your last night?
Only on a trampoline.
Let's have him do it in a cushioned environment, I would prefer. Great. And I just want more note of transparency that we've been working on and with the assistance of our town attorney and others in an effort to provide more transparency around liquor licenses and liquor license applications. Chris, I don't want to steal any thunder here, but I do believe that all of those will now be available to view online starting today. Is that correct? Excellent. So there's access to view any liquor license applications that the town has received, be it for a special event or for any other purpose online. So thank you. With that, I have nothing additional to add. Any of our council members? Terrific. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Safe travels and meeting adjourned.